I'm gonna bring in Dunbar, the Select Board meeting order. All three selectmen present, town administrator present. We have the police chief, the fire chief, the road agent, town clerk. And Leo is video recording for the benefit of the public. That'll be on the town website. Linda Nickerson uploads it. Okay, I have some old business, gentlemen.
I'd like to approve the regular minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty five as amended.
Uh, looks like I'll second that motion, saying Dana was absent.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alex Dave, I did review though.
Okay, so noted. Here you go, Mike.
He was going for the record, but he missed it.
Yeah, a couple minutes. And Chief Scottland, um, you've got some updates here on your building needs. I think you're first on the agenda here. Scottland, Scottland?
However you want to say it.
Okay. Good to see you, all right. I read through your, um, I read through your proposal here from the beginning. I'm good with them all, I'll give it to Dana, you probably haven't seen it yet. It's basically doing some painting and updating throughout their building. And, uh, they're doing the work theirself themselves and we're purchasing the product. And I think that that's kind of a no brainer. Uh, the only thing I had a question was painting the brick. Brick is kind of timeless and you don't have to maintain it if you don't touch it.
Sure.
And I, that was my only concern about painting the brick and having it, you know, peeling or flaking and. That was my.
So there's some interior and some exterior work here?
Yeah, so interior stuff in the training room, in the kitchen area. The last time it was painted was when the renovation happened, which I think was two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen-ish. Um, so the walls are getting dirty. There's some holes that we've patched up from where things have been hung and then moved. Uh, and we did, uh, we did try cleaning off some of the walls and, but, you know, it's tough. Depending on the type of paint, it doesn't necessarily work all well. So we tried, but we figured with, um, the holes that we've patched and.
It was time.
Not, not cleaning up as easy as we thought it would, that it might be easiest and best if we, if we repainted. And we worked with the Sherman Williams rep. Um, he recommended a paint, uh, if they have one that's specifically designed to be durable, to be easily washed, um, which I think might help us in the future if we ever run into this again.
And we also opened up a commercial account so that there's a very substantial discount on the cost of paint. That's why the numbers look so long.
Yeah, so I, I was talking to Hope about it, uh, when I was in here dropping out some payroll. She had mentioned that, uh, Sherman Williams does a forty percent discount for government entities, uh, government employees. So under recommendation, I went and had a conversation with them. Um, and they added that, they extended it to us as well. And we'll set up the account for us.
Did you have a chance to talk about painting over brick yet, how long it stays on and all that?
I did, he didn't, uh, he didn't give me any guarantees on time. They do have a, the product that's in there that's quoted for it, um, is specifically meant for concrete brick or, uh, et cetera. Um, and they have three different lines of products. Uh, this one is the most durable. Um, it's the, the most water repellent, uh, and basically when it gets, um, when it gets dirty, you know, the rain will actually help wash dirt off. So at least amount of maintenance involved with it.
And your idea is to keep it some form of gray to kind of match up the rest of the new furniture?
Yeah, we weren't gonna change anything too drastic, uh, anything from a light gray to a darker gray. Very similar to, uh, kind of the way the school looks next to us with, you know, a light gray on some panels and a darker gray on the other.
Your sign looks nice up there.
It looks great, yeah, we were super happy with how it came out.
Were those, uh, four pictures renditions of different colors you were playing around with?
Yeah, the first one, uh, the lightest gray, we just color matched the siding that was next to it. And then all I did was in Photoshop, I just painted and clicked the darker shade each time and.
Did you have to find the current picture?
Yes, yeah, I'll show you. So the current picture, uh, the way it looks now, and this is, keep in mind, this is, um, unwashed. So our first project is gonna be pressure washer, um, to try and get some of the, you see the most of the mill do is kind of down toward the bottom where, um, the rainfall comes off of the roof and then bounces up on the, on the bottom of the brick itself.
Now, being where that's an eve.
Mm-hmm.
I think a lighter colored light show a lot of dirt quickly.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think you probably agree with me.
Light, you don't wanna go with like the dark gray at least up to the ballast.
Yep.
And I go something, cause it's gonna look terrible if it's a light gray being right on the eve.
Yeah.
That other gable is kind of clean, cause it's the gable. Um, do you guys think we wanna have that painted, the, the brick or leave the brick?
I, I have some concerns with the, the brick too. I, it's just that brick is, is almost timeless and I like to word timeless, but it's maintenance free. And once you paint it, it requires maintenance going forward.
Yeah, um, in fairness, I didn't ask them if they had any sort of a sealant, uh, you know, which after we pressure wash it and get it cleaned, um, if there's some sort of a clear sealant that we can put over it to help prevent the mill do from building up, I'd be happy to resource that as well.
Would you be okay with, um, approval tonight, maybe on getting everything else going, maybe to do some more research on that?
Of course.
Okay. Do we have consensus, the board?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. Cause actually there's some appeal to natural brick too, especially once it could be, if it could be pressure washed and then sealed.
Sure.
That would certainly have.
I bet it would look a lot better in pressure wash.
It probably would.
Okay, that's, um, great, so, um, I think a consensus on this is fine, we'll do that on our maintenance budget.
Okay.
There's a company, you're budget. Very good.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
Well done.
Don't fill us with the labor, okay?
Awesome.
I'm gonna go a little out of order because, um, the next thing on the proposal here is gonna be to do a seven, ten public hearing, so I'm gonna do a, a motion to add a, uh, Marcus Manning to the Dunbar Recreation Commission, um, term ending March twenty twenty eight. That was a new appointment here. Motion's been made.
Second?
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is through for signing. Try and wrap up a few minutes here. Uh, one thing I didn't do before I started the main agenda is public comment. Anybody not on the agenda that wants any public comment right now? Go ahead.
Um, just briefly, I'm strongly considering, um, having the town office office open on Juneteenth, even though it's a holiday, so that we can be closed on June fifth, which is two Thursdays before that. It just works better with my and my deputy's schedule.
And you're gonna post it early enough?
Uh, yeah, I'd be posting it starting early May.
Um, I have another question, I, I don't have any problem with that at all.
Could you just repeat, I was distracted.
So Juneteenth is a new holiday for the town.
Yeah.
But my deputy and I would rather take June fifth off, which is also, those are both Thursdays. And so we'd rather just shift the date that we are going to be closed and open.
Got it.
Um, did we approve Juneteenth? Did we did? When did that slip through my fingers? What's that for the teenagers?
No, I think it's, it went through, it was, uh, the state, the state, yeah.
We follow the better holidays.
I've had a couple inquiries this week. Now that we do have a, um, uh, part-time deputy clerk on to help with the additional hours and of course get you, you were all getting up to speed, everyone else. Will we be opening, um, till seven, one or two nights a week again? Cause it's really, a lot of people have asked me. I know that the other people up in the town office have had some concern. Have you tried to plan that in your schedule with her being there to help out?
To be open on evenings?
Yeah, at least one evening a week.
Not currently, no, I'm not.
Okay, is that something you could look into considering?
It's gonna be a ways out, she has to get trained and it's, I mean, even now, the system is down. It's been down since like four fifteen.
Yeah.
So if we were open, we're just dead in the water right now, I can't even do anything.
Well, I mean, something abnormal like that, you could sign up, system's down, we're closed, but.
And then people, you know how angry people get at the, at night when you're not, they're coming at night?
Well, nighttime or daytime, if the system.
Is it more likely that the system will go down at night?
I don't know for sure, but there's a lot less support at night. You know, we don't have any support, like, if, if a motor vehicle transaction, there's a lot of times I need to call the state. Well, it'd be kind of like, well, come back another day, you know, and then people get upset.
What type of state support, open until every day?
It depends on the night.
Okay.
If you could do some research in that, um, I know Thursday nights are a long time standing. And I've got a lot of ask and request from these people and I tell them, you know, it's not really our jurisdiction, but I'll afford that information to you and.
Yeah, well, I do wanna say, you notice I'm still here, I've just barely finished closing out and I'm still trying to wrap up the day's work and I have a lot more work. And Thursday nights till ten is very common. If we were open till seven, I would see midnight in my future as a regular pattern, even if midnight, or even if we delay opening, like midnight is kind of ridiculous.
No, and I'm not asking you to stay till midnight.
Well, I'm just saying, it takes out and then you go run and do the deposit. I'm frequently here.
Yeah.
Very late.
If you just look into it, that's all I'm asking, cause we have some concerns of residents asking us about it.
Yeah, I would very, um, highly encourage any residents who have an issue with the hours to contact me and ask how they can do the transaction, um, without, you know, I can make arrangements if people contact me.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's frequently a way to do a transaction, but if they don't contact me and they just complain about the hours, I can't fix that. But if people who contact me find out how they can address it. And I'd be really happy to help them.
All right. Yeah, I just thought with the, uh, new person, that would be able to expand that back at some point. I know that was taken away during COVID, people were expecting it to come back after COVID, it never did. We didn't have the help, quite frankly, to do it, um, after COVID. But now, as you get your training up and running, I'd like to at least consider it.
Well, we can consider it, but I just don't hold your breath.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, anything else for us, Jennifer?
Nope, I just wanted to mention the hours, cause I hadn't had a chance to email that I was strongly considering that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is now seven twelve. And I'm gonna open the public hearing to discuss the twenty twenty five road projects that we're suing here with our road agent.
Jeff Crosby, seventeen stock highway south road agent for the town of Dunbar. I was a little concerned, I saw two police officers here when I came in. Didn't know how this was gonna go, but I, I think it'll be okay. We're gonna be all right.
It's up to you.
We don't have too many people on our tennis, so I think it's gonna be good. I didn't know if that was to keep you guys in line or me in line. Anyway, road projects. Well, we're gonna do pretty much the same thing we do every year. Uh, routine maintenance throughout the town, which includes roadside mowing, some tree removal. As you ride around town, you can see we have areas that we have to do some shoulder repair, do ditch repair, which is an ongoing thing and pretty much all the roads we have to put our fingers on.
It's kind of sad, our five major roads we did, there is a lot of edging that.
It's just, it's a fact of life.
We have tons of rain.
Rain and just, it's just maintenance and it's ongoing. I mean, you never really done, the only ones that we have to do very little work to are the brand new subdivision roads, cause they're built to a certain spec. And they have correct ditches slopes and all that. And the rest of this is just, you know, kind of shoehorned through the years. Nothing, there's not horrible roads or anything, it's just the fact of life that you can't get away from it. Um, major projects, we're gonna put a top coat of asphalt on the railroad job, which is approximately what it is a mile long. And, uh, that's a substantial amount of paving. And that'll finish that project, we'll be done that. Another project that we gotta button up is over on Montalona Road, we re-ground a section of that, we changed some culverts and wind it out and tried to enhance it all over. It was pretty badly sloped and dim.
So you think we were not good?
Yeah, and I think we were very successful in that last year. So that needs a top coat of pavement as all, as well. Holmes Road, a number of years ago, we did a substantial amount of work up that, but up there. But from that section to where it meets Route thirteen is pretty much gone. I mean, it's disintegrated, yeah, it's disintegrated. And we gotta come up with a, a plan on how to really do that approach, um.
How did you do the rest of it, you grind it all right up?
We just broke that up with a piece of equipment and added gravel and that, it was narrow up. This, the problem that we have there is the way it comes down to the state highway is not the best. And when they did the major road project back in the late fifties, and that's what the town wanted and the state wanted to do, and, and it was a whole different time then. We're talking about a long, long time ago. So it, it's problematic for a lot of reasons, um, the way it meets the road and plowing and coming out with a truck, it tosses you back and forth. And also it, it's gotten more dangerous over the years, cause there's not a lot of sight distance there. And the cars have increased, you know, it's just a fact of life around everywhere. So we've gotta come up with a little better plan on that. I, there's been some talk, well, I've talked to the state several times, about moving it a little bit up, up the hill a little bit, leaving it where it is and try to do something. But it's gonna be kind of a shoehorned type deal, but we've gotta come up with something.
You'll have to carve in the.
Yeah, but the trouble is, it's a lot of ledge there.
Right, to make it flat.
Yeah, that's why they kind of did what they did. The other option is the old road bed that falls parallel to Route thirteen is still there and still intact. In fact, there's even some asphalt on it. It isn't, we couldn't like repave that, we'd have to grind, knock that, grind that up a little bit and add some gravel. And it would essentially bring it back up to where it originally met thirteen, which is almost the crest of the hill, which is ideally the best place to meet the road, cause it's level and it'd be good sight distance and all that. It, it's not that much further, it's less work than the first section, but it's a longer distance, so we gotta kind of weigh out the, the cost of it, I wish it would be better. One thing that, uh, that.
You would get rid of the other access.
Yeah, the other access would go away, totally go away. The, uh, as far as potential growth on that road, I believe right now, just the way things stand, two more lots could be created up there without just going through a regular simple subdivision process. Um, there's one, two, there's four houses total on the road now. So two more could be built that would access on that road. Uh, I don't, again, knock on wood, I don't know, I don't envision any big development that would go in there that would really change the dynamics of it.
Would those be on the soul's lots or?
Yeah, they would be soul's property, uh, basically. I'm not sure the configuration of Markus, but Joe Soul is both sides of the road by his house. And there's enough acreage to be simple subdivision. I have no idea what he'll do, you know, in the future. So, I mean, it isn't, again, like I said, there's not a lot of impact, so we gotta kind of figure out.
If it's a subdivision, would, uh, some of the cost of upgrading the road be passed on to the?
I guess we could, but there, again, there's nothing coming down the road that we're aware of. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm just just speculating, looking at the number of acres and how much frontage it was and what possibly could change up there as far as development. Uh, so that's another project we're gonna work on. We've got a couple of little sections where we gotta repave a section of road.
Cause maybe that's a crazy idea, but if we do do the long way, go up the hill, we're in all essence giving up more frontage on class five for subdivision. It, I know there's an existing, distinct new road right there, but.
I guess you're splitting here, isn't it, cause it's already, it's a, it's a town road anyway.
Right, so they could upgrade it if they did a subdivision anyway.
Well, yeah, but they would probably ask for a driveway permit, not a, you know, you follow what I'm getting at? We're not, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're not giving them frontage that would enable them to do a subdivision? They can do a subdivision. It's still a town road, it, it never got closed, it never got abandoned, it just is unmaintained. I don't even know if it truly reverted back to that old class six designation. I'm not sure about that. It may have, it may automatically have done that. But all the plans are stopping up from the state.
I think the state's in there that if you don't maintain it, it automatically goes.
It very could well be, I'm not sure of that. It very possible.
Can I ask a question?
Five years or something, maybe?
Yeah. Can you use town funds on the class six road?
If, if we deem to upgrade it, we can.
If, if it's for cause, for safety and that type of thing?
That's what would be.
Yeah, because they're.
Yeah, if, if we're gonna do that, I'll come back and ask.
Maintain it because it's class six road, but if we upgrade it.
So I, I mean, I don't know if we'd have to go through the regular process of having a meeting and upgrading and changing the classifications. I think that's kind of what Lee's getting at too, if we would need to do that.
We'll have to check that.
If, if we were gonna do it, obviously.
For us to do, but we probably have to go through some steps.
Yeah. At one point in time, a number of years ago, they tried to, uh, not they, but, uh, somebody, a selectman or whatever, tried to close the road, I'm, I'm talking like the sixties, and it was voted down to discontinue.
Almost every one that gets voted down.
Yeah, and, and there's been a couple other issues over the years with neighbors and stuff, and it's, it's been muster. So anyway, that's a little bit of speculation, I'm kind of getting off track. And we gotta, nonetheless, we gotta do something and maybe that's what we'll just, just stick with what we got. It might be the easiest and make it work. I mean, I've talked to the residents there and they're all kind of, you know, they know what's gotta be fixed and something's gotta be done, but they're all in favor of not reinventing the wheel, type of thing.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking maybe I could speak to the state and maybe get a little more signage. Help out, you know, like road or something, I had, cause it's on the state road.
I would think the state would want it to go up higher where it's flatter and.
Well, I would think so, but I asked them that when they, uh, when they did the road. I said, why didn't they go up there in the beginning? And he said, well, it's, you know, late fifties, should have shrunk your shoulders. He said, the selectmen didn't wanna do that. We just laugh, cause neither of us are, but everybody blames the selectmen.
Of course.
You know, that's the people to blame, right? So anyway, that, that's basically it, I mean, that's nothing earth shattering.
Yeah.
Earlier this year, we had some, oh, oh, sorry. We had, we had some concerns on roadway road drainage issues. Was that, did you ever have, address those?
That kind of quieted down, I haven't heard anything.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't remember, I'm like.
We had some emails, we had some emails from residents up there saying there was a drainage problem, it was a county issue of drainage up there. And, uh, if you could, we'll pull those emails, I'll pull them to you.
I remember a couple years back, but I don't.
No, this is within the last four months.
I mean, this year, this year, actually, we had, uh, as far as month season went, our gravel rolls were very good. For the most part, held up very well.
I'll make sure you get that email.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm unaware of any major issue.
We had, I just recall Raisin was complaining about it.
Yeah, he always gets, when, when they come into my box, you get a call.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and maybe, yeah, I.
I'll, I'll, I was.
Very possible.
I'll make sure you get it.
Very possible.
There was something last year where a whole, a lot of gravel came out during some heavy thunderstorms or something onto Twist Hill. I remember that, I mean.
Yeah, that could be.
That might be what it is. It was a, a lot of debris in the road from, from washout.
Yeah, washed across the road or something.
That's, they should do roads.
And sometimes that does happen on any roads. That could have been it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't remember anything that weighed up to me this year.
Yeah, that's fine. Retract as appropriate.
The other thing I almost forgot about are my nemesis, Kelsey Road. You gotta get in there and build that turnaround and, uh, that's like one of the next things on our list to get that built and do some improvements to that.
You're starting early on that, you think?
Yeah, the turnaround we're gonna do will probably be the next couple.
Facilitate power, of course.
Yeah, exactly, there's a couple other facets to that. Some of the other work we'll probably put off a little later in the year to see how all the funds dispersed for the paving and the other thing, and then we can go back. Cause we have a combination of funds to use on that, we have some of that exaction fee and some town money we can put into it. However, the turnaround is isolated, totally separate, and that is something the town's totally paying for out of Highway Department construction fund.
So who are you thinking, you're just doing the turnaround, you're gonna do some ledge work right now?
We're probably gonna just do the turnaround for right now.
I know you wanted to get that done last year, but time.
Yeah, we ran out of time and miraculously, everything took care of itself. And did a good job plowing the road this year and, uh, we had no issues.
And the snowfall wasn't terrible.
Nope, no, everything was good.
Just the cold winter.
Yeah, and they, uh, there's a builder that's building two homes out there and, you know, and that's the other thing. If we were in there trying to remove ledge and all that, that complicates it because they got workers going into the houses all the time and then the residents that live there, so. Those houses, I'm assuming, I'm just assuming, this will probably be completed by the end of the summer, I would guess.
Pretty far along.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So I think that, you know, that's definitely in the works to move ahead up there with some improvements.
All right, well, thanks for the update. Anybody from the public have any questions for Jeff? Police department? Skated out pretty clean this time.
Yeah, I know, usually we, uh.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. Thank you, Jeff, for coming in.
No problem, thank you.
Um, we have a, we are gonna discuss, uh, parking ordinance out here, if we'd like to keep you.
Yeah, I'll stay out, if you don't mind, I'll stay.
Next thing on the, uh, agenda, actually. Lee, you printed out some copies for everybody?
I have a few, I suppose you guys all have one.
So this is a parking ordinance for the front of this building. We have, um, some larger vehicles tend to park on the edge of School Street here, kind of blocking this parking lot. I think there are utility vehicles. It happened during COVID and I see some love parking right there on the edge.
This is obviously a thing for you, but do you wanna copy it?
Do you guys wanna review this with us? We haven't had time to go over it a couple times. I know we tabled it. Um, I'm not sure if it was, if Dana wasn't here, but we did cable it. And, um, I reread it this evening before we came in. There's, um, pretty much overnight parking is prohibited unless the town administrator, police chief, or the select board, uh, allows that to happen. Vehicles creating traffic hazard or obstructions. They would also follow the RSA and get, get it towed out of there. And I don't think that speaks to just here, I think it's all throughout the town, which.
Correct.
I know we're missing that ordinance and you guys have had those issues come out in the field on several of those small dead end roads in town.
Yeah, we, we can divert to state law on that, and this, may I speak to the origin of this? Uh, it came about from the Joint Loss Management Committee. A concern was brought up about vehicles parking in that corner, um, obstructing line of sight, just a general increase in traffic, pedestrians, people walking around, so. Came up with that as an example, and then I started looking at just kind of parking issues we've dealt with in general in town. The no parking, no overnight parking signs, um, we have no mechanism to enforce those. So this would allow us, for the more egregious issues and the repeat issues, the opportunity to actually be able to enforce it. And then the traffic hazard, obstruction, et cetera, that's taken right from state law. It's just another mechanism that we could use under a town ordinance.
Where would the vehicles be towed to?
We follow Goffstown PD's tow rotation, so they have three, uh, records on rotation that are local to the general area.
They were there, yeah.
Yeah.
Now that we don't mean control of the vehicles.
We do not, okay.
Thank you.
It would have to be pretty egregious for us to tow.
Well, I think it's, um, gentlemen can't plow.
Exactly, that would be a prime example.
That'd be a major example, yeah. Or even if the public can't pass, that's another example.
Yep, or if like a, a vehicle is blocking access to a public building or something, we could tow it. We would first try to find the owner, you know, if they can remove it in a minute or two, great. But if it's creating a problem, we could tow it. And that is in existing state law, but I wanted to add it to this ordinance as well.
There's a, there's discussion on signs. Would, do they really work or not? And then we gotta plow and they're gonna be kicked over. I, I say that would be the most inexpensive way of trying it out, rather than painting the, uh, corners.
Mm-hmm.
I listened to Jeff Jeff, said signs are challenging sometimes.
Yeah, I think they're painting them, but if that's the best way to move forward with this, I have no.
Just as a trial, if it can keep it.
My thing is, these guys behind me are the ones that are gonna be settled enforcing it, you know?
Yeah.
But, yeah, if that's what we, we would like to do as a town, I've got no problem with it.
I mean, if there was, there was, you know, we could use hash marks, but the thing is, uh, someone, someone said, uh, do we want spaces painted in here? And Dave was always, uh, he was always like, uh, kind of negative against that.
I don't, uh, you know, I think we got a country parking lot out there.
I, I, I.
But there's more is less.
Yeah, I think the signs would just be a start, let's see what happens with the signs, so I, I'm in favor of that.
Would it be a single sign, a double sign, like no parking between signs?
Probably something to the effect of, uh, maybe two compact car parking only signs.
Oh, okay.
And just that extreme corner right over there.
Yeah.
Because during the day, you have some commercial vehicles stop for coffee and they block everything.
Yeah.
The way I find it, they're not really parking in the lot, they're parking on the edge of the road.
That's what I saw this week, is they went around the, they were right after the pole, a big truck on the right went into coffee, and this coffee came back and left.
Yeah.
So.
You know, maybe, um, maybe too, we could talk to the owners and, and when they see the larger trucks out there You know, maybe um, maybe too, we could talk to the owners and when they see the larger trucks out there and just give the guys a heads up, you know? Find a little bit better spot to park, so we don't get closed down or something.
Charge them an extra coffee and tell them to hop it off at the police station on the way by.
And a bag of donuts.
But yeah, I think uh, not that, not that they can close down, just to be uh. But advocate for themselves, you know, as they see people parking there, I guess a little bit.
Yes, they had a parking sign on their lawn saying parking with an arrow.
Over this way.
I know the uh. Planning board wrangled with that parking issue over there when they came in years ago, when they were cool, and it was. Talked about to great length and, and Mike brought it up, I mean, it is a, a public parking lot, so they have the ability to use it. But we can restrict it, I believe, Chris was just explaining.
I like the idea of making them an advocate for, you know, good parking dynamics out there. Right, they, they could help a lot.
And I think the people you're talking about, the large trucks or whatever, they're not, you know, really, they're not conscious of what they're doing. Yeah, they're not doing, hey, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just doing this because I can.
Right.
They look at the assessed situation and try to figure, fit, you can park, my regal fit in here and I can get out of here, you know, so.
Well, that and a lot of times they have the tag laws.
Yeah, no, there's, it is, you know, there's utility, large pickup trucks, dump trucks, and it's, it's a wide variety. And it's not all the time, it's just occasionally and.
I think, I think two compact signs is fine.
Yeah. I, I do too.
Yeah.
All right, I agree.
Keep it simple.
Go with that. Okay.
So are we gonna hold off on adopting this policy and just go the signs now, or are we enforcing?
Um, I think the rest of the policy, I think we could adopt and then just do the simple signs out there, not go much further than. Not strengthen it, not doing anything else and, and, and I see in here that the, please understand the ability for us to say, as you guys do for verbal, I can. You know, try and move them out. I think people do use that.
Chris, is this adding to anything that already exists, or is there literally no parking ordinance at all?
There's no parking ordinance in the town of Dunbarton. The only thing that's in there, um, that mirrors an existing town policy is the snow removal policy. But I wanted just kind of one general parking ordinance that covered all the issues that we run into.
Right.
There we've had some issues like at the end of Holmes Roads, other roads where people are, are parking. And blocking access for other owners that have, you know, land uses beyond that, and. They, there's no ordinance in town to work on some of that, because parking isn't, is available to people, as long as they don't block the road.
No, I have to commend the police department on Holmes Road, on that road, they were really, verbals were significantly helpful, just educating the homeowners. Both homeowners.
And I like the idea of just having something to start with, and then as things come up in the future, you could say, hey, let's add number four and number five to this, right?
We can build off of it, and we, we do run into quite a few vehicles parking, especially over at the school. Late at night, and generally, they're not up to anything good.
Yeah.
So having a mechanism of enforcement for those vehicles would be helpful for us.
Jennifer, you had something for us?
I, I just wanted to ask, so the permission, the authorization, is that gonna be verbal or written, or how, what is the process for that? And how can I be sure that my deputy and I, you know, do we need an individual, like per occasion that we're working late? Or it'll just be a town clerk's office is allowed to work late as needed, or?
I, I don't think there'd be any problem with you guys working here in the building doing it. It's not, that's not overnight.
Well, I would like to think so too, I'm just wondering.
That's not the intent of the ordinance, municipal employees parking in a municipal parking lot.
I, I understand that. While they're here, right?
Yeah, they're working.
So should it say, are you today in here, or will we definitely be excluded?
It's more for overnight, overnight working.
As municipal employees that are present in the building.
But there's nothing on here that's actually addressing anything that you're doing anyway. You're not sleeping in here overnight or.
Well, it says overnight parking, that would imply if there's a car out there, it could be towed without bothering to say, oh, the person's inside working.
Well, would you be in here at eleven o'clock at night?
I sometimes am.
Well, if we saw you inside and your car out there, we're not gonna touch it.
Yeah.
The, the whole intent is for the, the people that, you know, we run into over at the school at midnight, one AM, or even people here. You know, bumming the wifi from the library at two in the morning, what have you, just things, things like that.
I am amazed people still they park over by the library there, to steal the wifi or borrow it or use it or whatever you call it. They're there for hours.
I have one more question. On occasion, someone will pull into the parking lot, the car is dying, something's going wrong. And they're trying to get somebody to either jump them, help them get out of the parking lot. We contact you guys, you guys are aware of it, you have the make, model. And they say, I'm gonna be by in the morning to pick it up.
That, that ordinance gives us latitude, we, we have discretion to enforce it as necessary.
Right, right, and that's, and that's how we usually work these issues that come up on occasions.
Yeah, even a note in the, in the window if somebody wants to be.
You can make a blanket prior authorization for all town employees working past any hour of the day, can, are exemplus, you know, that's our, it's inherently in there.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't even think that's necessary.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's inherent. I, I can move with that.
So I'll make a motion to accept the town of Dunbarton parking ordinance as presented to us by the chief of police.
I'll second that.
On today's date. Do you get a copy, you want us to sign now or next week or something?
I'm gonna have to do a single sign if I need to sign it, so then we can scan it for the police department.
All right, motion been made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Long time coming, chief, thank you, thank you.
Seems pretty simple.
Yep.
Put them over in that pile.
Yep.
I always uh, flip them so that they're in the right order for Jennifer. Okay. Sign that complaint paper for Jennifer already. Would you guys wanna give that copy to Jennifer?
I actually just gave it, yeah.
Wait, back now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it to the mailbox items now. Um, and then we're gonna go back to public comment before we go into non-public here, as we have three non-publics tonight. Okay. We get an email um, earlier this week from Patrick Brown, Woody from the uh, transfer station. We had one person down there give notice. And um, it's gonna leave them a little short for some of their Saturday hours. We're gonna talk about this at length a little bit further on in the meeting, to try and develop some strategic ways to keep it operating on limited personnel. So that will be taken care of a little bit later. Um, we have an email from Sue Basie regarding the signs on the town lawns, indicating herbicides were used on the lawns. Um. And the herbicides on here were used by Concord Lawn Care. And we'll have Lean to reach out to them and check with them and make sure that, she said that they affect people and dogs and animals, so. We'll check into that, I kinda, you know, they use those herbicides all through different lawn care companies, I would think they're checked out, but. I'd like to follow up with that.
What did, what does she wanna, what does she wanna answer to, whether they're approved for use?
Uh, she's, she's read online that the herbicides, uh, it's D I C A M B A. Tecamba.
Okay.
Has spread throughout, there's no question as to whether breathing in air, intermediate reaction, you know, some of that stuff after it's dried. Um, just a few.
Usually take two rain, after two rainstorms, it's pretty much uh, safer for animals, you know, but I don't let my dog walk in my grass when I put it down, for example.
I think that's why you had signs all around town.
Yeah, and most, most companies will put a little sign, and it's been treated, it's a little.
Oh, I'm not sure, did you see it, Mike?
Yeah, it's a little, I didn't see it, but I think it's a little stick-up sign they usually put on our lawns when they commercially treat it. I think it's, it's courtesy to do it. And I don't know if it's a requirement by law, but, but safety of the town, I think we should put those, companies should put the signs out before we leave. And they only last up for about a week or two.
Hmm, it's a mailbox, so do a separate plow. Okay. Uh, we have another um, email from Patrick Brown, Woody from the transfer station. On the three Saturdays in June, he's having trouble with, we're gonna discuss later. And non-public for some ideas on those again, that's what I was alluding to earlier. We have a bid here for spring cleaning, um, for the upstairs of the library, the second floor, vacuum floors and stage. Clean window sills, clean wainscoting, mop floors and stage, total cleaning, two hundred dollars. Hundred and forty-four for the window cleaning, three forty-four for the total. You guys okay for Lean to go ahead and tell them?
I do have a little bit of extra budget in that cleaning line, with carpet cleaning and print cleaning.
Seems reasonable to me, I mean, it's gotta be done, it's getting pretty dusty up there.
Yeah.
Been a full year of use, a little much clean.
Is the same company that is this, this?
Yeah, that does this one in the foyer, yeah.
Okay, I think we'll get them going, Lean. Next email is from Gosdow DPW. Uh, road work scheduled for budding roads. They sent us in a noted. Road clean, twenty twenty-five road plan, clean as approved.
The thing that's courtesy that somebody working on roads that have butted the town of Dunbarton and that could impact traffic, but you got a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Maybe we're trying to, the police department, do we get a copy of that?
Oh, could I do?
Montalongo Road down by Letchwood Dunbarton Town Line. Uh, the rest I don't see touches. There's only one road that I see that touches our intersections here. Um, some off of Montalongo, some Tarrell Hill. Top pulling some roads out there past Montalongo, it doesn't look like. Too much that's gonna affect our traffic, but we'll give you guys a copy if you have it. There's a picture of the benches near the town hall second floor, looks like good use there.
So Mary took it?
Yeah.
So second floor over there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said they look really good, and she said you'll probably leave the.
Right underneath the quills, it looks like they belong there.
It does. I like it.
You'll marry, I like it.
Go on, use it.
And four volunteer firefighters, put care of getting those up there, before one of their Monday meetings, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
That was great.
We did do um, transfer station part-time attendant posting. Uh, pay rate, starting pay is eighteen ninety-four an hour, if anybody knows anybody looking for uh, twenty-four to thirty-two hours a week.
Where's that posting at?
Uh, we're gonna ask Lean right now. We did the New Hampshire Municipal's, uh, Municipal Association.
Yeah.
Town website.
Yep.
Uh, Facebook.
Out on the, I'm checking with PD and see if that's something they do, but I did get confirmation from um, BoTimes and. That weekend newsletter that they put out from Concord Monitor.
We won on Chris's website, that gets all the action.
Notice about our employment.
We can put it on the police department Facebook if we'd like.
Okay, I'll send you some information.
We've done that, I think.
Does the BoTimes uh, charge for anything like that?
Yeah. Nope, nope, Nora Lamarck is the one that handles that and.
Yeah.
I don't know if you know what I'm saying.
No, Nora Leduke is the one that handles that.
Um, I was able to get her to post something about us purchasing the solar panel array.
Oh, okay.
And she posted that in there, so I'm gonna be giving her regular energy committee updates.
Oh, great.
And she's interested in us, you know, being able to share stuff with the residents.
Yeah. She's our liaison from Dunbarton that gives information.
We get another, we get Concord Monitor, we get a little, we get another.
That's the one, it's, it's through Nora Leduke.
We have BoTimes and.
And, and she handles the news article for both.
Okay, so will you put the listing in both papers?
Yeah, yeah.
And Chris, is that something you can?
Yeah, absolutely, we've done it for other town departments before.
Okay, that'd be great, I think, we get that word out early this spring, get a person or two, it'll probably help us out a little bit. Uh, we have, the last item I have is a resume from Nate Naris for board consideration.
I thought, I thought he was proactive, given, just showing us what he can offer the town if we have those need for services, so that's good. So, put it in his personal file.
Right, it's not anything that describes any type of employment, but it is services for acoustic ceilings and any other type of consultation of some sort of.
Interesting read, I like that.
Yeah, I have a lengthy resume.
Okay, that's it for the uh, mailbox items. I'm gonna bring it back to the uh, for public comment from the crowd, anybody anything?
I do, actually.
Okay.
Cause I thought it was pretty easy on you earlier, and I didn't take much, much of your time, so I wanna use up my allotment. Is that all right?
Sure.
Two eyes are still behind you.
Yeah. See, they know, they know this thing. Jeff Crosby, seventeen, back I was, as a resident, nothing to do with road agent position or whatever. You sparked, sparked my curiosity, what was the objective of spraying the lawn? What were we doing?
Oh, we're fertilizing the lawn up front here.
Oh, fertilizer.
We're also doing the school, and we sent all the paperwork before we started the school.
I don't doubt that, I was just wondering what the end result was, a herbicide for, passed for a fertilizer?
No, it's a dandelion, like, that's what, that's what it would be, a crabgrass control likely this time of year.
Cause I agree, the lawn is pretty ratty.
Yep.
And it was our decision to, to try and do it, we were looking at doing one section, not the school, not, we just did it all, I'm pretty sure. We get a, a pretty decent rate.
Yeah, we combined uh, resources.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I just didn't know if it was a, a gritter thing, or a, or a enhance our beauty of our lawn.
Herbicide is, is.
And we pay the lawn guys every time they mow, so it gives them more.
It was Concord Lawn.
Full play, they fertilize, so you have to mow.
Exactly, that's the idea.
But they were, they were very competitive with the.
That's fine, I just didn't know what, cause the gal had some concerns about hurting the pets and stuff, and that's what got my, sparked my interest, who, who are you trying to achieve?
And had they put the sign out, she would have known.
No, exactly, that's fine. Uh, that's good, that satisfies.
And they have different things, they'll say, stay off until it dries, some days it dries in an hour, you know, to me, it's dry while it puts it down.
It's just giving them fair warning that it was just applied, they needed to be careful.
Exactly. And this other thing is just an idea I have that I've been cultivating in my mind that I.
Baseball field?
No, not just. Not a baseball field, um, it kinda goes on that, and I wanna start off by saying, I think it was great that the town of Dunbarton bought that property up there. I think it, it was in a good mood, I think it was affordable, and I applauded you guys for taking the initiative to push it along and make it happen. And I think the taxpayers all accepted it wonderfully, and I think it probably will do us some good. However, guidance that we're a long ways off from doing anything up there.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
A long ways off. I mean, it's gonna need extensive site work to develop the site. You know, and, and an overall conceptual plan of the land, how to set buildings on it, best use, and we all know.
It should be done right, too.
And I mean, that, that's, it's gotta be done in steps, and the cost of those type of, like a, a police fire. Combination, which is a great idea, is millions of dollars.
Yeah.
The other thing, shorter term, something we need now is to address this town office. What to do with the town office. I mean, it's working, there are some complications, as you all know, and it's always a bone of contention what to do or not to do. You have a perfect spot right across the parking lot, you gotta build a new building, right out there on that common.
The same size building wouldn't work.
You could build a bigger building, you could build, just hear me out, a nice cape style building that would fit in with the town. How it looks, how it's made, with like a key room off the back, you could easily get probably five or six good offices. All crafted and designed to be efficient for the people that are gonna use them. And a large room off the back that could be a good meeting room for over four meetings, for anything here. I know we've talked about using the town hall for it. That's not that handy, you have to go out of another building, go to where it drags stuff up. I'm just thinking, this is a little outside of the blocks. We own that land, the power's already here. Access road is already here, there's a septic system already here. It could be built in that area. Then raise this. Then raise this, move your access road over to where this is, keep the parking between that building and the access road. So you wouldn't have these issues we're talking about tonight, cars going back and forth and enhancing, and it would be pretty cost-effective, because some of those major things are done. That's just something to think about, I mean.
Yeah, you brought it before, I think that we still have parking issues, um, if you keep the town offices here at this location.
I don't foresee it moving up there anytime in the real near future. You would make your position better, because the roadway would be on the outside of the parking area. Right now, you're crossing through the parking area, the people have to cross the street to get to the buildings. So you would take that variable out of it. I'm not saying you're gonna increase a lot more parking spots, maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't, I, I don't know that. But I was thinking more in the, the fact that we own the land, it's a level lot, it would be pretty easy to develop, and those three major components.
You wouldn't be using the second floor. You said a cape, but you wouldn't use the second floor.
No, you wouldn't, I wouldn't do a second floor. Keep it as cost-effective as possible.
Yep. You wouldn't have to buy a tree.
He's not buying it. He, it would, it's just something to maybe think about, because that would be a solution that would, could come about fairly quickly. All honesty, by the time anybody breaks ground up the street there, it's gonna be a ways off.
Oh, for sure.
And it's, it's gonna be a lot of money, I mean, you don't, there's not even an access road yet.
I think it's a valid, valid idea.
I mean, it, it might not be the most popular, but I think the building could be designed that would fit in with the neighborhood. And I'm just saying a cape, not a, you know, something along those lines. It's just something to think about. I mean, one-story building. I see you could have a ground level, handicap access would be fairly easy. You wouldn't have to build elevators, ramps, or anything, come right into it. Think about the layout.
You're talking about taking down all the trees?
Number, number one would have to go, yes. I mean, you can't build around them.
Trees are recyclable, I mean.
But I mean, yeah, that would be the downside, but.
Hundred-year-old trees are. Yeah, but what, what you could do, you'd be expanding the, uh, the parking space too, by just doing that.
And it would make it, it would make it. I, I'm not gonna even go on how many parking space you get, because I wouldn't know, you have to put it on paper. But the safety of it would increase, because again, like I said, you don't have to cross the road, if the access road is basically where you're sitting, the cars would come in there, loop around, and go out, so you're not crass crossing the parking area. Again, you could, I feel that you could build a fairly attractive building there. It would, could be fairly cost-effective, I mean, it's like I said, some of those major components are done. The water, the electricity is right there. You, as you know, Dave, what it costs to get those items done, and then the access road and the site work, this would be quite cost-effective. And then everybody could stay in this building, they'll move in day, move across the street, and then my suggestion, again, it might not be a popular one, raise this, I mean, yeah, the, the other end has some pretty nice historical value, maybe you could get somebody to move it to their property and make a clubhouse out of it, I don't know. It's just something to think about.
Even, even that portion, I think it's ten or fifteen years down the road in my eyes.
I could, you could, within three years, you could be occupying that building.
Oh, no, you could.
If you, if got on a stick, came up with a proposal, took it to the voters. And, I mean, up there, yeah, you're fifteen years down the road up there. I mean, I'm not trying to be wise, it's just, it's a lot of money.
That's all we wanted, it was, you know.
But it's, it's, it's worth having it, it's, it's a great piece of land, it's gonna need extensive work, but it'd be a great piece of land, and, and the town can grow into it, I think, at some point. But I, I was just thinking about that, because there are, there's been a lot of discussion about this office and its functionality, you know? Something to think about.
Okay.
All right, I said my piece, thank you for putting up with me.
All right. Thank you. I think it's a, an idea worth entertaining, for sure. Um, anybody else for public comment? I'll bring it back to Lean Comall, the town administrator. Dana, anything for the board?
No, nothing.
Mike? And I'm good with the board tonight as well, public comment is over. We're gonna take, um, we're gonna do non-public. Per R S A ninety-one dash eight, colon two, zero, zero, two, eight, after.